One person to zoom in, right?
Uh, Steve, yeah. But I'm sure they're gonna be here. It's only 5:30.
Oh, we started at what time?
Six.
Oh, I thought it was at 5:30.
No, no.
Oh, I didn't even look. Oh, when did we change it to six? A while ago. On Zoom, it's been six.
It's been six for eight. If you want to go back to five, we can go back to five. Actually, it used to be 4:30.
Since I've been doing it, it's been 5:30. Probably could. Because it takes, depends. I guess we need to look at how.
He's getting.
Start with you, Deb.
Deb Tingway, Town Clerk.
David Barlow, Treasurer.
Dave Gallup, Taxpayer.
Udi Percy, Cobb and Dew residence.
Donna and Lynn Griffiths, Residence.
Scott Brier, Select Board.
Ned Conwell, Town Administrator.
George Barrett, Resident.
Rory Barrett, President.
Jeff Lucas, Shandown Property.
Kevin Trickering, Representing for Lyman Brothers.
Lee Curtis, Boyland.
Charlie Menckler, Property Owner.
Al Byard, Property Owner.
Margaret Colletzer, I guess on Fall Festival.
Hey, thank you, everybody. We're gonna call a Monday, July 12th meeting to order at 6:00.
6:04.
6:04.
And I just 19.
All right, yep, 19. Now, the 12. 12, yeah. Monday, July 12.
I've already planned the next week's meeting.
Okay. Changes or additions to the agenda? Anybody have any?
Um, I have a treasurer's report. I'll do it during other business if that's okay.
That'll be fine, David. Thank you.
Actually, your listed treasurer's report is number 10 on the agenda. The June 21 treasurer's report.
I have number 10 warrants on it.
Uh, you're supposed to. Yeah, no, I know. Okay.
So do I have the wrong one?
No, no. Yeah. Number. Number 10, June 21.
Yeah, that's what I have. So maybe we want to print this? Do we want to give this to everyone? That's, this is all posted here.
Maybe I'll copy or?
Yes, I'll look at it.
It's the one that's posted.
With you. I'm blocking with you. It's my neighbor.
Oh, there's a bunch right now.
No. No, it's just one.
Yeah.
Okay, so no changes or additions to the agenda. The treasury report is line item 10.
Yes.
Public comment. Now, public comment?
I have something I want to bring up. I don't know if it's public comments or it's not on the agenda. It has to do with the reappraisal. And the availability of the data that's supplied by the consultants. I always told my consultants that the data that's not available on the page, the database. Terminates at the end of process because the, not including the contract, it writes on the data. So I just wanted to kind of get somebody's idea on how that's actually going to work. Of course, the comment is basically, well, it's on the data cards in the clerk's office, but it's a little difficult to get by here to get it all. When I had my hearing, my grievance hearing with Bill, and asked him about the data because I couldn't access the database online. Because that's a pretty subject that the town does not own the database. The database, it will rely on cards. They're available here. So I don't know, or am I out or?
I think that's maybe something that's another business.
Yeah, and I actually, yeah, we, so we can scan the cards and put the card, if I can scan cards up with the town clerk's info. I know you and I have spoken about that briefly.
Yeah, actually, I was just getting ready to send you guys a message. It's cutting out. I can't even understand what is actually being said. I'm not sure if the microphone is not in a good place or they need to get closer or something. I can hear you, Scott, but whoever just spoke, I couldn't even actually understand a single word what they're just talking about. But to answer your question, Ned, we did go ahead and talk about placing the assessor's cards online through our online portal. I believe Bill Krajewski, though, is supposed to come back forth to the board and try to see if there is still another way to be able to go through the actual software that they previously suggested to have it on there. That way, it's full-time, real-time involvement. He wasn't quite sure exactly how they would end up being able to create a PDF for each one of those files for us to be able to upload. So I guess with that being said, that's probably just where I will leave that at this point in time.
When, when Bill comes in, I will speak to him to make sure that's a format either get online or not on our website. Having redesigned the website is a different service. So hopefully we'll be able to get it up there. If it's not there, we'll be able to put it up there as one big house. Just work through it and get, you know, be able to get access. May not be the smoothest access, but you at least have access.
Yeah, up, guys, it does that you not do the PDF data cards. You can't, you can't sort. You're basically reading a picture on the PDF. So you try to take the conference, you scan them in, and you, then you keep them on there as PDFs. You're basically, anybody who wants to coordinate with other municipalities or other towns. So it needs to be in a format that is acceptable along with all the assessor notes asked, the assessor notes. I wasn't able to get the assessor notes, but the part of the data that's in the law. The town has that information and you should own that information. I will say, just going through the process was a bit painful. It's pretty much remote. And even for people who might have been remotely but still live in the region, they're doing it remotely from home. It's difficult. And the biggest problem at the end was that grievance hearings are public meetings and they're available to anybody from the public to lots of people. There were 10 grievance hearings that were scheduled. I asked. Paid a bill grievance hearing and was told, sorry, we don't have to phone you in. And so my hearing was the very last because I wanted to participate in the nine grievance. And I wasn't able to participate in any of it. And I honestly don't believe it's because we don't have the technology to tell a conference. So that was a bit of a disappointment. And can't redo it, can't do it over. But I would like to know, once again, why is it we are not set up to be a better part of business to be able to have accessibility, valid, and.
Those are real good questions.
Just for a second, I, can anybody else hear Deb? I can't hear anything. I'm hearing, getting the cutouts too.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna ask because I think I heard my name there a couple of times, but I have absolutely no clue what was just said or who said it.
Yeah, I missed all of your last speech. I heard you clearly right there.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do is if anybody wants to make a comment, I'm gonna have them come up here and talk into the speaker. So those of you on Zoom will be able to hear what, what we're discussing.
That may work better, Scott.
Okay.
But it looks like Donna has her hand raised.
Go ahead, Donna.
Um, I think it would also help if the people who are on Zoom would stop talking privately if they're unmuted because I keep seeing yellow boxes popping up and that's cutting you out as well.
Okay.
Margaret was up next. Go ahead.
Okay, so.
Okay, so what I was saying was when I brought up the question about the assessor's budget, when we had gone into town-wide reappraisal, we agreed that we were going to figure out how we were gonna put them cards up online. And then the, the conversation went in a different way and I couldn't understand why the agreement had changed and why we didn't stick to the original agreement. That is right, what Beltradeski is saying. We didn't sign on to that because we were gonna sign on and have them do a whole entire portal. We agreed it was gonna be, I don't know, $15,000 or something and we would have to maintain it every year. So it was a question or some kind of software or something and then the selectmen shot it down to not do it. So that was kind of going along the lines of when I was questioning the assessor's budget before town meeting last year. Because I couldn't understand why we weren't, and then Deb Tingway was the one who told me we weren't going to use the online portal that we were supposed to do at the beginning when we first agreed to go into town-wide appraisal. So there was a contract somewhere in there that maybe we should revisit or look at again.
Yeah, I guess what I can say to you is we'll reach out to Bill and find out what exactly is gonna be available and what we can expect to get from the files. And, you know, if you wanted to come back to our, are you up here? Are you able to come to our next meeting?
I'm here for the 21st.
So.
Yeah, 19, so.
So at the next meeting, we'll have the answers to your questions and we'll be able to, you know.
Ned, uh, excuse me.
Yep, go ahead.
Excuse me, Ned, don't you have those answers?
Uh, well, I do not have the answers.
When we reviewed it, you talked about having a, the school put them online and we had shot down that proposal, Bill Trudzuski's proposal.
We shot down the 7,000 during the budget season, which was the price to have it.
So I'm not even sure if I'm talking about the right thing because I just can't hear anything. I'm sorry.
No, no, you're talking about the right thing. And I will get the information from Bill and we'll get it in a format, more than likely a spreadsheet format, something simple that people can work through and we can put up the file on the website, something straightforward and simple.
And that's gonna be sustainable because I do anticipate another reappraisal in the near future for this town. So it need, not just, not just a spring capture of data that we have from this reappraisal, but something that we can sustain in the future.
Right, something you can add, something that can be modified.
You can show history, you can trend, you can determine whether your profit's gone up or down or sideways or whatever.
We'll have to see what they have. I can't promise anything in terms of historical data, but we'll see what they have, right now.
Yeah, we'll find out. We'll let you know next week. We want to make it simple, easy and cost-effective and what's, what's necessary.
Thank you.
Thanks. Hi, Deb.
Okay, thank you. Um, because I had mentioned to Bill too, with the ARPA funds that we are receiving as part of that, item number three does include land digitalization, not number three, but, um, I forgot which one, does include land, or I should say, digitalization of land records, which you may be able to allocate some of those funds towards, toward the cost of the program that Bill would like to go with. Um, I know his reasoning behind that is, like I said, it's gonna be real time. Whenever there's a change made into the assessor software, it automatically goes and updates it directly onto that online portal where if you do it our way and Facebook, my online portal for land going to be that constant PDF file that's going to have to be generated every single time that there's some change made or whatnot, which I think was just his inefficiency of doing it that way. But like I said, I know you're reaching out with Bill, but I just want you to be aware that possibly some of the funds could be covered underneath ARPA, at least to get it up and going. And then it would just be the, whatever the cost would be going forward, have to be configured within the budget.
And Deb, did you receive like another $5,000 or 2,500 more? What do you have left?
Um, for my grant I received, we were only awarded 13,4 and that's already spent. That I had to spend by last December, December 31st, which we did between having all the last 40 years scanned and then the cost of our online portal through Nemrec. So we don't have any more. Originally, the state had granted like 20,000 per different towns, but then there were so many towns that jumped on board. They had to end up going and scaling it back. So the amount that we were able to receive was a 13,4, which we utilized all the way up per penny. So I mean, we have the capability of having it being placed on our online portal. It's just, it's not gonna be real time. It's gonna have to be a PDF file. Like I said, Bill was not sure how he was gonna be able to get those into a PDF file. One, two, it would require somebody, which I'm sort of thinking maybe Mr. Barlow, um, to have to go in and input every single one of those PDFs into our online system as far as the data and the actual image itself compared to the actual software that I believe it was Patriot originally that they were looking at going through. There's no one required to input all that data. There's no one required to attach that PDF. There's no reason to create a PDF. That system automatically just transmits all that data out onto that online portal. It's there. It's real time. Whenever a change is made, that changes out on the portal. So definitely some, something for the select board to maybe discuss with Bill as far as the pros and cons of both ways of doing that, even though there may be an initial cost behind it to begin with.
Can I ask, does the town have an information and security technology person that represents the town for digital information?
No. Yep.
I'll check with Bill and see what's going back to people around here.
Right, and then maybe we can have them come to the next meeting and we can revisit and let's talk about it and see what, what the options are. Let's have them. We'll have them here.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other public comment? Seeing them. Okay, Deb?
Okay, um, I'm wondering.
Deb, do you think you could just get, maybe just talk right into this little, or maybe I can get your seat?
Okay, I'm just wondering, um, if I can get back in here for the senior meals.
So, um, we, we really appreciate you doing the senior meals. It's a great, great thing for the community. One of our concerns, and I think we've, we've been talking about this for quite some time, is insurance.
I'm just waiting for, I need a liability. I've already talked to my agent.
Okay.
And depending the cost, Deb told me the foundation probably.
Yep, and if the foundation wouldn't pick it up, it's maybe something we put on a warrant in town meeting and, you know, approve X amount for the insurance for the senior meals. So you, you need a liability, what the town would require for the certificate of insurance to look like? Okay, so can we reach out to Brian and find out, you know, is it 500,000? Is it 1 million?
I would say 1 million, but I won't check with, a D L C T would be the people because they're the asset holders.
And when were you thinking about starting the meals again?
I'd like to get in here as soon as possible. Um, I have a lot of elderly.
Yeah.
And they're really anxious. They've been locked up for over a year and they are asked every week. They've been asking for three months now.
Okay, so I'm thinking between the town attorney and D L C T, we should be able to call you and get to the limit possibly as soon as tomorrow. What, what, what a good requirement on your policy would be for the town?
Um, this, I've started my eighth year in AP. Uh, nobody's ever been hurt, gotten sick or anything.
No, I think it's great, you know, but looking out for the whole town is something that, you know, unfortunately, that one time could happen and it could jeopardize a lot for everybody.
Yeah.
But no, I think it's a great cause and, you know, I, I think you have a lot of support from the town, from myself. We just, just need to go right through the process and I think you're almost there. You, you have an insurance, someone who you've touched.
I talked to my agent.
Yeah.
And, um, he said that, um, from what he knows, he does the same. They go from, um, like the nursing homes to, uh, community places to, to play music for the elderly. And he said they're covered under their insurance.
You could be just underwriting on someone else's policy too, possibly, you know, as a blanket coverage. I'm not sure exactly how.
University knows about charging a fee. It's the fee-based program, very different. You're giving it away.
So maybe, maybe you just don't charge a fee and it's a donation.
Um, well, it's not like I make money. I don't make anything. I have all of my figures here. Um, on the average, I take with what the founding reimburses me about 200, up to 200 each month. So that's like 50 bucks and with what I take them at $4 a meal, I spend more than that on the food. I don't make anything.
But maybe the town, maybe we should word it differently and maybe the town should donate some money to you so you don't have to charge the $4 or $5. That might be better. We should look at that.
That's part of Brian's letter is that would be essentially, it would become an under our role.
But they also, they're not just coming to the rest. So that is the other.
I guess Newport, Derby, Orleans, Barton, Lowell. Yeah, um, I get a lot of people. Right now, I'm curbside and then I deliver after I curbside here and I'm running about six people.
Wow.
Here, it's usually around 40, sometimes a few more. Sometimes the, well, usually.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
Well, they get a lot of food. Um, and, and now because I don't do beauty juice. They get extra, they're, and they get meals, at least four meals instead of one. They're getting big portions.
Eat one and take home?
Well, yeah, still have enough so that they can have at least two decent meals. I'm sorry.
So.
I'm tired. I've been up since four. Got to get up four in the morning.
So do you have Deb's direct contact or phone number? What's your best phone number? Write it down.
Yeah, go ahead.
Six, seven, three, six, four, seven.
Six, seven, three?
Six, four, seven.
All right, so tomorrow we'll talk to the BLCT, we'll talk to the town attorney, we'll get you some numbers of what, what you need. And I'll ask about the fee and see if that, how that affects the insurance in any way. But I understand, I know you can charge a fee, but I would just.
Well, I'd like to do it. I just myself can't afford it. And um, there's a lot of people that I have, out of say sixty that I'm doing curbside. I would say about eighteen aren't me. They don't, I don't charge them. They just don't have it.
Yeah.
And um, that's where luck comes in. Um, I go to the, the Elks for the food draw. I go to the United Church for the food shelf and I go to NECA for the food shelf. Um, the head one of, of the food shelf for NECA, Barbara Edelman in St. John's Berry called me. And because I was the only one that hadn't stopped doing senior meals, other than the ones that got a hundred thousand dollar grant from the state. Uh, she said that, you know, if they could do better, you know, um, for me to pick up extra at, at NECA.
Yeah.
And a lot of the stuff that I get for me, I mean, that's where it goes. The juices and vegetables, you know, it goes into the meal, so.
And you're saying when you host it here, you usually have forty participants?
About forty, huh? I set up, I set up, um, five tables and there's eight to a table and sometimes have to set up more. And also keep in mind that when school is in session and everything is normal, I have the school kids that come over once or twice a month. They put on little plays and, and uh, you know, Christmas time and, and other things, so.
And usually you do it once, once a week here?
The food, the seniors are once a week, every Tuesday. Um, the kids, uh, I, they haven't been over, you know.
I understand.
But um, they'll probably be back once we get here and everything's, you know, better. Um, they come once or twice a month, you know, different classes. They'll bring uh, two or three classes at a time. Um, depending how many kids in each class. Sometimes they will have the meal here. Uh, which always the foundation has picked up the extra, you know, because I put that in up to the two hundred.
Hmm.
Um, and uh, when the kids leave, they have a goodie bag, cookies, fudge, uh, pencils, erasers. And that's for me. And for the seniors, every holiday, they get food, uh, breads, cookies, fudge, whatever. And that's for me. That's not added into anything that's given. Because, you know, they, I have people that don't even use a stove anymore. Um, it's, it's really sad.
Yes. And so we'll reach out to you tomorrow. We'll do, we'll see what we can do and we appreciate your efforts.
Well, I probably won't answer because I'm going to be busy. Just you can leave a message.
Leave a message and then you can reach back.
Yeah, I can pop over.
Hopefully we can get this started within the next, maybe not as soon as this week, but maybe next week.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's on my list too. I was going to ask about it.
Can you put your response to her inquiry in a reading minutes so we can, all of us can hear what the responses to her questions?
Uh, reading minutes may have to be posted legally after you post more than likely before all those answers are done, so no, it won't be.
But you could put some of them in there.
We can, we can.
And most of the other, it sounds like it's going to be an ongoing conversation.
Yes, it will.
So, but to keep everybody informed on the answer, because you're looking like, what's the answer to her question? And we won't ever know because you're going to be communicating directly with her.
See, we're around a Tuesday to know what the answer was.
Yeah, because I'm a real bitch.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Deb. We appreciate everything you do.
I, I, you know, I, I started this with the man who was going when we, you know, went to the store. I got everything I needed and split it down the middle because my mom used to live in the housing up here. And there was nothing anywhere. And she would have loved something like that. I mean, we don't just eat. They play cards before, we play bingo after, um, Halloween, dress up with prizes. And, you know, all the decorations for the holidays. Almost every holiday we celebrate. Because they just don't do it at home anymore. And uh, like I said, all those, that comes from me.
It's very nice.
I just, I like to cook. I'm going to go for it. Might as well use my education.
You really like to eat?
Yeah. I mean, these are people that get the meal. Um. They all have this, they have this separate theater and the past two or three holidays, I've. Oh, building itself. And Rory has helped me serve it.
Yeah.
Because they don't get out.
Right.
You know, just. So it's not like going to a restaurant, but you know, somebody else's cooking.
It's probably better.
Yeah. I don't know. I try. I'm going to leave if you don't.
Yeah, no problem, Deb. Yep, okay, thank you. We'll be in touch with you.
Yep.
Okay, number five, discussion on switching to Australian ballot for town meeting and as related to Act sixty. So Deb, you, we had talked about this the other night and I guess some of the information, you know, it's not quite as simple as we had thought.
Yeah.
Want to elaborate a little bit?
Um, what we'll have to do is yes, the legislation did put through that new bill. But that new bill only affects towns that currently already utilize the Australian ballots. Um, it gives those counts the capability for the select board to personally or locally vote. As to whether they want to mail those ballots out to residents. Um, for us, what we would have to do, we cannot skip that piece. So my suggestion, I'm thinking, uh, which makes sense, is to go ahead and put that on the warning for this town meeting. The option for us to be able to go Australian ballot, let the residents vote. Um, and if they're all in favor, then next year for town meeting, we can absolutely go ahead and start with doing the Australian ballots. For everyone for town meeting in hopes to get more involvement from our constituents. Um, you know, just allowing and giving the opportunity for more people to be able to vote the ones who are not able to get here in person that day.
Or the other option is we could hold a special meeting prior to town meeting and get it in place, possibly if the town votes it that way prior to town meeting.
That is correct. I was just thinking cost-wise, I mean, you're going to have the mailing, you're going to have to send out to the residents. Then you're going to have to hold the actual day, have the JPs here or my election officials here for the whole entire day. Um, to go through and accept those, those tallies, the ballots. And then, you know, add them up at the end of the night where I was just thinking if it's at town meeting, we're already going to have residents here. My election officials will already be here, so it really wouldn't be any additional cost, um, for the town. I'm thinking if we hold a special meeting, you could possibly be looking at maybe two thousand twenty-five hundred. As far as the total cost to be able to hold it, to make that determination where if we wait till town meeting, we're not going to have that cost. Because it's already going to be included within the normal cost of the town meeting.
Okay, it's something to consider. I guess we'll have to think about over the next couple of months.
Definitely, if you want to do a special meeting, sooner the better. You guys are going to want to go ahead and make that determination. Um, that way we can get things planned because it's going to take time to get the information pieces set up. And then to set the date and make sure that it gets warned and noticed, um, because you're going to have to have the thirty days. Um, in between the information going out and us actually holding the election itself. Um, it's just the sooner the better would make it easier and then that would give us our direction. Um, early, or I would say probably late fall, as far as whether we need to start looking at absentee ballots. Again, like we did last year, you know, just to help streamline what that process is going to be. I'd rather know well in advance than wait for the last minute and try to scramble to get things done. I mean, we definitely, we did it last year through COVID and it, it worked out perfectly fine. But definitely it's nicer just to have that wiggle room to be able to actually go plan and get everything done.
You also got a way in the, if you have questions, you don't want somebody to come in and want a question on the ballot and you do not have it. So you have to give time for that. And you also have to make sure you have time for the candidate forms and before all of that too, which was a very big crunch last year.
Right. And Martha was just saying, you know, yeah, if we, if, if we were to switch, you know, it's a time crunch for the candidates to get their information. And yeah, now and all the information to the people so everybody gets a fair shot of, at, at being on the ballot.
So, so what, Deb, what would be the drop date on that go or no go on the special meeting? October, November?
I did not hear that.
So what the question on, the question on the floor is, what would be, what do you feel the, the latest date to hold type of meeting to, for us? You know, for the town to, um, vote on, um, switching to Australian ballot? Well, would you say like, we'd want to have a meeting no later than, um, probably sometime in October?
I would say September would be prime, October definitely the beginning of October. Because at that point in time, you want to start getting the wheel set in if we did have a special meeting. And our voters did go ahead and, um, approve it. We, at least we'd be able to start getting things in motion, which, you know, getting our ballot created, well, as far as not created or printed, but at least get it started. Um, as far as the candidacy forms, that would be well in advance for people to know. If your name, if you want to run, your name has to be on the ballot, you know, go ahead and please complete this form, get it back to us by this date. It just allows more communication for our voters. Um, so I would say definitely I wish you for beginning of October, just to give us a lot more breathing room.
And remember, if you're going to go have absentee ballot, you're going to want to waive the form, the candidate form. Because you have the petition to get three or five percent of the signatures in order to get on the ballot. But the select board will be able to waive that candidate form where you just fill out a candidate form, say, okay, I'm ready for this all. So you're going to make sure you keep them two together.
Yep, Martha was just mentioning for those of you on Zoom, you know, that the select board would have to waive the candidate form. The petition for three signatures, so. Yep. All right, well, thanks for the update, Deb.
Can I also ask, um, are we going to go back since our time of town light appraisal is over? Um, are we going to go back this year or next year to the listers? Because the condition of doing away with the listers was once town light appraisal was done, we were going to bring the listers back.
I'm not, I don't think bringing the listers back was a thing. I think.
Oh, it was.
I'll have to review, but I honestly think what was going to happen is we're going to have Bill Kredeski.
Yeah.
They're going to, they're, the auditors are going to come, or not the auditors, but the assess, the assessors are hired to come once a month.
That cuts out the people, that cuts out the voters, the, that puts out that elected position. And a lot of people would not have voted for doing away with the listers had it not have been that they were to go back when the appraisal was done. It was a three-hour long, a three-hour long select war conversation. And then there was an hour-long discussion at town meeting. Mike and I stood up and went at it with Lyle and Anita over it. So it definitely was to go back to the voters once the assessor. Because an assessor is a paid physician. That's not a voted-in representative. They don't take an oath. They don't represent the people that represent the town. So permission was not, that was not on their bill. I would not, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have advocated for that myself.
Deb has a question, I think. Go ahead, Deb.
Oh, no, I would, oh, okay, I'm muted. No, I was going to say that, yeah, definitely it was brought up at town meeting where Mike Marcott did specifically state. Um, actually, I believe it was the same meeting that we removed the office of the listers and replaced it with the hired assessor. Basically, sort of like has, not as one of the conditions, but it was brought up for discussion. Would this opportunity come back to the voters to go back to the listers once the reappraisal was done? Um, basically the hired assessor was to get that department back into order and everything back up to snuff where it should have been. Because there were so many inefficiencies and inadequacies with the data, with the personnel, with everything. Um, so that Martha is correct. That is something at some point we do need to bring back in front of the voters to see if they want to retain. The higher assessor or if it should go back to the, um, office of listers. Um, you folks have the select board can go ahead and discuss that as far as further or, you know, I do know it was stated that it would be brought back out to the voters.
So that's something we could either, we could either hold a special meeting or discuss it town meeting?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Simple question, if we will retain, you know.
Right.
Assessor or do the majority agree to go back and put the listers back out?
We also have a contract with Bill Kredeski who's been for.
Another year.
Another year or so, yeah.
We have for another year. So, yep, thanks for bringing that up, yeah.
Democracy is a people, so I have to.
Yeah, I agree.
So if we have him for another year, then it may make sense to maybe have that on this year's, um, warning has an article. Um, this way, depend on how the voters want to go with it, at least that would give us the year to do a transition if they did decide to go back.
So it would take, it would take effect like July first of twenty twenty-two?
Well, it would take effect at next town meeting when we vote them in.
Right, but they wouldn't take effect till, till the end of the year, probably till.
Yeah.
End of the fiscal year. I think our fiscal year is probably the end of the, end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, your election, you don't want to hold a special election, so at next town meeting next year, when you're doing candidate forms, you say, okay, the people said we're going back to listers. So starting March of whatever, twenty-two, the listers will be sworn in and we will transition out. We'll still need to transition with Bill to the listers, so you have kind of.
Any other discussion? Um, I think that, that pretty much ends the discussion on, on that. Um, moving to number six, discussion and decision on burdened service invoice for Larry Royer on July twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen. So, um. Yeah, go ahead. I mean, I pretty much have it summarized that he, he did have, he had the right permit. Unfortunately, the fire got a little out of control and I don't feel, I firstly, I don't feel that, um, since he had the permit. I don't feel that Larry Royer should be obligated to, to reimburse the town for the, for the, for the fee, right?
We just need a vote, and that's my recommendation is just drop it. He had the permit, Pedro was verified. We just need a motion to vote to say, drop it, let it go.
So I make a motion that, uh, we drop, um.
Wait, Barlow's waving.
Go ahead, what are we doing?
Oh.
Go ahead, Dave.
So in my mind, there's a negligence factor here. He burned up an excavator. He didn't have a permit to burn his excavator. He had a permit to burn wood and other burnable materials. Uh, what about the negligence? I mean, it's flat out negligent. We don't burn our excavators on daily, as a daily occurrence with a burn permit.
Well, uh, uh, may I speak?
Yeah, I, Deb, go ahead, David, and then we'll take Deb. Deb put her hand up too.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you can look at it that way, Dave. Um, I mean, a, a hose can blow on an excavator at any point. I mean, a hose can blow on an excavator at any point. And you can, you have, all of a sudden, you've got that hydraulic fluid blowing in there and it caught on him. One of the things I would like to see, and I think it was mentioned because of this, is that we have all burn permits either in a text or an email where we actually have proof that the permits were given. Otherwise, when you have just a verbal thing, I don't believe that's, I just don't believe that's good for the town in any way, shape or form. I don't think, I really don't think it was negligence. So much as, I mean, like I told you, Dave, I mean, I've run an excavator for years and you just never know when a hose is gonna blow. And you're basically throwing that fluid on the fire and it's coming back at you.
Yeah, I'm sure he didn't expect to burn his excavator.
Well, I hope not too, but you know, is it normal to use an excavator to shovel stuff into a fire that close?
I don't think the Russia expected to put his excavator in the river either, you know.
Yeah, but he didn't, we didn't have to pay to pull it out. I mean, he did.
Yeah, go ahead, Deb.
My only comment I have to that is maybe has a suggestion going forward when certain circumstances like this happen and we do end up receiving a bill from, you know, the fire department or whatnot. I'm making a suggestion that possibly maybe we should run those invoices by Pedro for him to review. Just to ensure we are not being charged for some items that we should not have for. With this one scenario, I believe there was some article of clothing and whatnot that we were charged for that was damaged in the fire. That I know we're talking with someone else, technically, we really should not have been charged for some of that. So I'm just wondering has a due diligence, if we should, when we receive an invoice, pass it to Pedro. Pedro can let us know, you know what, yep, they didn't need to have that one tanker, they didn't need to have that one fire truck, they didn't need to have this. That's legit, or he can say, you know what, they didn't need to have four fire trucks, two would have been sufficient, then we shouldn't be charged for two fire trucks.
What's the legal opinion?
I didn't hear that question.
What's the, what's the legal opinion?
That I don't know, that's a question for Ned.
And can I ask why we haven't gotten a legal opinion? It seems a bit controversial.
Uh, because we have, the question was, did he have the correct permits? He had the correct permits.
So that was, the question of liability wasn't the question.
Uh, the question is whether we should charge him a fee or not was the question.
And so Pedro doesn't have the permit book?
No, he had the permit. There was no problem, Larry.
But he said that he wanted something to be with the town.
In the future, in the future, going forward to have, because I call, I burn, I have a little brush. I burn, I call Pedro, hey, is it all right if I burn? I got a small brush fire and he's like, go ahead and burn. But I guess the way to do it would be, okay, send me back a text saying, Scott, it's okay to burn. And then then that would be, is that what you're thinking? Your thoughts are, David?
Yeah, have it covered by either a text or an email and maybe have Pedro forward all of those to Ned.
Should be a legal record in the past.
So was it, was it an actual, an extra bill for the town or did it just come out of the fees that we already pay?
Oh, no, that was an extra bill that we paid. That's anything of this nature is in addition to what our actual contract is. And I believe this one was actually targeted, has like a hazmat type scenario. So as soon as you get something of that nature, that's a check that we are sending directly to the fire department and that is not covered underneath our yearly contract with them.
Well, I guess I'd like more information than before I make a decision. I want to see that contract.
Which Ned should have all those contracts.
Okay.
Okay, so we're.
Yeah, I can, I can see maybe, maybe if there was a contamination that had to clean up. But I mean, if it's, I don't see where they can charge you for the fire. If Pedro's giving them a, charge you extra for the fire, if Pedro's already given them permission. I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to look at that.
Yes, send it to us, Ned. All right, so we're gonna table number six and we're gonna put it on our next for next meeting. We'll get some more information on that. Wasn't it a couple thousand bucks?
Because it was hazmat.
Yeah.
That is a lot.
Okay. All right, moving on. American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty one funding for Coventry Motion to Accept Allocation Appointment. appoint authorized representative and contact person. Do you want to tell us about this? This is that ninety?
The fifty five this year and fifty five thousand next year. Do you want anything before I jump in?
No, go.
Okay, the Davids are registered representatives at this point on the federal website. And it says they're registered, but we also need to have a motion and a vote at a meeting to accept the funding and to, you know, spend it wisely, the way that federal government always has to do. So this, that's why we're here and we need to get to them on their website by fifteen.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty one funding and appoint or continue to appoint David Barlow as the authorized representative and.
Interrupt Scott, I, I think the, I think the intent of the wording is that the authorized representative would probably be you and I would be the point of contact. So you would be the authority, I would be the person doing the admin shuffle.
Okay, so does David Gallup want to make the motion?
I wasn't paying attention, sure.
I can make, I can still make the motion, okay.
I think you still can.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All right. Fifty five thousand?
Fifty five, one year, fifty five the next year.
Okay.
Maybe. Maybe.
Maybe.
It's in the coming lots, not all, will be checked.
Okay. Okay, approved Coventry Community Church Rehabilitation bid from Jan Lewowski. So David, Ned and myself met with Jan over at the church a couple of weeks ago. He went through the scope of work. He had a made a bid proposal. You know, he's really knowledgeable about that type of structure. He, I mean, he, his, his bid for the town and, you know, the scope of work was explained really well. He knows the King Trust and the Scissor Trust and the Queen Trust and he's the guy. When this guy passes away, you're never gonna get your church fixed again. He's the guy, so.
He came in at a hundred twenty four thousand and then it's been approved by Preservation Trust of Vermont. And meetings, and there were three of us, we suggested that we add some additional funds to a contract so he can get somebody to replace the roof of the the main body, the roof, plus the minor pieces of the people area. Some minor painting of the steeple area and the cleaning of the debris from inside the attic area of the church. And I've been talking with ourselves down the, down there on the street. I was recommended that we get, we go up to about a hundred sixty five thousand, it's in terms of approved funds to get this done. We have money set aside in the capital reserve account, plus fifty thousand from the Preservation Trust of Vermont to make this happen. So I would suggest maybe to a hundred sixty five thousand.
Yeah, I think, I think probably a hundred and seventy five thousand.
One seventy five?
I think so. And he also, he also said it's something he'll get done before the winter time, you know, he'd get it done this fall. And I think it's exciting and I think we didn't have any other, there was no one else, there was no one else. There was no one else. Oh, yeah, there's no one, there's nobody else who even looked at it, about a tough time and, you know, we have set the money aside and we have a grant. It, I mean, it is a lot of money, but I'm afraid also if we don't do this, we're not gonna have, this guy's sixty, seventy years old. There's, there's no, there's, there's not that many people that do that long work.
Well, does a contract require you to sub locally?
There's no one around.
I'd just like to mention, I don't find our advertising to be an effective plan of action. We've used VLCT and on other things and we get very little response. I think we need to be more aggressive in our advertising for the projects. And I just, I just don't think that's the only venue we should be using.
And he's gonna do it a hundred percent himself, his own company, not some, I think. He probably would better get off to him to sub locally and give some local companies a chance to.
He is local.
Yeah, but I mean, hire some.
But he's not, he's local. He's local. Convenance, bro.
With all that hundred seventy five, one, one company?
No.
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay, oh, you said it, he does the contract.
He got the contract for a hundred and twenty four thousand. We're gonna seek bids on the standing seam roof and then some painting. That's not gonna, this isn't gonna take the church to a hundred percent. This is only gonna get the church, hopefully, we'll get the church weather tight for winter.
And he, he has specifically store preservation, especially who we know he's worked with. Specifically, the roof has to be working.
Asking about the heritage designation, we have very specific criteria we have to follow for the buildings in the village, not that the village is village designated. So he is best of the best.
Now, Dave, you met with him, correct, earlier in the first, the first meeting of the church?
Yeah, a couple of years ago.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
But I still, I still am gonna question using VLCT, is there only format advertisement, it's just not working for us as a town?
We actually advertised in the Newport Daily Express for three consecutive Thursday, Fridays, so. Stuff out there and I went through every transaction and the back of paper of the Chronicle and the Express and sent emails to everybody that was out there or anybody that had a mailing address and bar also.
Put them back out there and let's get some bids.
He said put it back.
Put it back out there, but we still have to leave it out there for three days and Jan, I'm sure he's gonna say, thanks, but see you next year.
Well, no, I'm fine with Jan. I'm just saying we're getting nothing done as far as the painting and the roofing. We've, we've got to be more aggressive in our advertising and we got to find qualified people to get that stuff done.
I, I have two or three people that are gonna give us a quote on the roof. And then the painting, I think for this season, I think the painting that we're, we're talking about is when he takes the upper steeple off and that comes down, that, that'll be painted when it's on the ground. I don't believe the complete church painting is, I don't know if, I don't know if Jan's gonna finish in, you know, end of August. I'm thinking in more like September, October, and I don't know if, if painting outside after October is gonna be an option. But possibly definitely get it, we could definitely get some painting bids lined up and maybe.
And David, do you have a suggestion for the advertise?
Go back to the newspapers.
All right.
Okay, so do we need a motion to accept a bid? Make a motion to accept a bid from Jan Lewandowski?
To and to approve the extra funds up to a hundred and seventy five thousand, is that the motion?
I didn't see the extra funds, I'm sorry. I thought it was a hundred and twenty was his bid.
We were going to approve the extra funds for separate bids on the roof and separate bids on, you know, so we don't really know what the painting is gonna cost us when he takes the steeple down, but you know, if we can reach out to a painter, a local painter and he says, yeah, we'll come paint for thirty dollars an hour, when it's down, we, we have the authority to pay him. Because this. The bid, but we can approve extra funds.
You already have a fund set aside from the reserves and some other.
Is that how you want to word the motion, Dave? Or do you want to word?
So you wanted that, how much more?
Well, I think the roof is honestly gonna cost somewhere around forty thousand. And I think extra painting, while, you know, to paint the ceiling inside possibly after the roof and where Jan takes down the metal inside to touch that up and then to do the painting of the louvers and the painting of the steeple while the staging is set up. You know, I'm thinking that that could cost five or ten thousand dollars. I, I really don't have any idea.
You know, I'm also gonna go back in terms of the painting bid to the gentleman, the local guy who put in the bid for the whole body of the church to see if they'll do for just the steeple.
Right, possibly, we could reach out to the, yeah, the one bid that we did receive and ask him, you know, can he do a portion of it? We can break it down, you know, maybe, I think it was Bill Sandville gave us a bid. Could maybe he could do the steeple. You know, he'll do it all for the price and if we approve it, he'll do this much for the steeple and the rest in the spring.
Okay, so how much are we looking for?
I think, I think a hundred and seventy five thousand. I mean, we have the money aside anyway, so we have to have a select meeting and approve more funds for different, different aspects of the reconstruction or the preservation, we will be able to do it.
All right, I'll let you make the motion.
I try and make the motion that we approved, Dan, and I did ask him, I tried to beat him up when we were there and he only wanted to go off on his contracts because he said it was two years old and things had gone up. I tried to get him to take five thousand off. No, he wouldn't take a dollar off. Yeah, he, no, he was okay with his bid, so I make a motion that we accept John Lewandowski's bid for the timber restoration of the church as per his contract and approve an extra fifty thousand dollars in funds to use towards a roof and painting and any other repairs.
So move.
All those in favor? Approved paving bid from Pike Industries. So isn't Mr. Barlow there with us? Dave, are you there? So what do we have in the, what do we have in?
I'll slide along up here.
The funds.
With my treasurer's report. My ball's on, anyway, let's see. We're talking about roads.
Yes, I'm talking about roads.
Current balance in the reserve fund, six hundred and twelve.
Six hundred and twelve thousand, okay. So we had received some bids for some paving. I think we had four, three bids come in. Pike Industries was the cheapest per ton. I believe we decided we were gonna use Pike Industries. They were, their total bid price is more than what we have in our funds for the project. They were okay with leaving the price per ton the same and allowing us to take off portions of roads. So what we're going to do tonight is approve which roads the town wants to pave and how much money we're gonna spend.
I'm gonna make a motion to reject the bid as it became null and void June twenty eighth.
They expired?
Yeah.
Day, June twenty four.
Where do you see that, David?
Yeah, because the price is valid through twenty twenty one.
The date was six.
Number two, worldwide energy and petroleum markets continue volatility and consequently Pike Industries. Number two, worldwide energy and petroleum markets continue volatility and consequently Pike Industries. Reserves the right to withdraw this quote if not accepted within seven days, if we do not receive a response. Acceptance subject to project award to this quote in seven days, it will become null and void.
When the, when was the last time we talked to them?
I haven't talked with them.
Nobody's talked to them.
I have talked, I, I have talked with Norm, he wanted to know if we had made any decisions and I had told him that his bid was the lowest. And that we were going, our meeting got canceled and that we were gonna vote on it, so I guess we could approve this as long as they would still accept.
As long as they still do the same pricing.
But you have to get the letter read though.
Yeah, we.
Yes, yeah, right. So we can't technically approve this.
That's right.
Okay.
We can go out to bid, we can discuss what streets we're gonna do, the total.
And just do those streets.
The bidders that have submitted and get them to resubmit and just update it.
Still gonna oppose it, doesn't sound right to me, allowing two bids on one project.
They're saying, though, it doesn't make sense when they say price is valid through twenty twenty-one, but then they make it null and void seven days.
But they're pricing it out, and that doesn't mean your bid is valid in the, that's two different things.
Well, we never accepted any of these in the first place, though.
I did, we did it, did we accept?
No.
We've never accepted anything, I was surprised to see it written on the agenda the way it was, it made it look like a decision had been made.
It was a discussion to.
If you look at the minutes, it clearly states that we were gonna review the bids.
Yeah.
So we could make an accurate assessment at this meeting.
Okay.
So how? Do we come up with the roads we wanna do?
So we kinda have an out.
Another bit put out.
So we kinda know which roads we think the town wants to pave that are on this bid list that we had three bids for. So I believe Pike is the cheapest, we could resubmit it to all three, just what, exactly what we wanna have done now that we know the cost. Or would we reach out to Pike only because they were the cheapest?
You gotta give them the street, give them the road and then.
Yeah.
So that's kind of, you have that bid in front of you, you can try to word it, Mike used to dangle the words somehow and say. Approval upon them agreeing to that price amount, you can do that, but other than that, you're gonna start the bidding process all over again.
I'll stick to my guns.
Yeah, I don't think we should, yeah.
No, and I'm all right with this too, yeah, I didn't, I didn't understand that, I didn't.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be honest with you guys, we fooled around too long on the paving, I'll take some responsibility, but I think the board has to take more responsibility in not getting on this earlier. Um, I think for this year, I mean, it's late and I really believe. We oughta just do a top, top coat on Coventry Station.
Yeah, or priority codes.
We're not, we're not in a desperate situation here, we have fine gravel roads. And I just, I just think we're hurrying, by the time we do another bid, we're gonna be another two weeks. We've already, by, by the lateness in putting out the bid, we've basically eliminated Pikes and Hudgens. From being able to, um, not Pikes, uh, Grays and Hudgens from bidding. I think we should just go with the station for now, I know that's not gonna be a popular thing. What was that?
Could we still have to put that out the bid again, wouldn't we?
We probably would.
Yeah, well, I'd still have to put it out the bid night.
If we gotta, if we're just gonna do station top coat, we're still gonna have to put it out the bid, so, but it's a small.
It's a small section, there's no prep work to it, just go.
But you'll have to bid that separately.
Well, I think that's what he's saying, is just, just do Coventry Station top coat and then we come around to the rest of it next year and then.
You start, you start fooling around with gravel in September, we're gonna end up with the same situation we have right now in Coventry Station. Where we have a poor base coat on that, the ramifications of that moving forward could be quite costly. Instead of getting ten years out of a project, we might be down to seven years, and I'll give you an example of that. Uh, Alderbrook, we have three hundred thousand in that paving, started in two thousand twelve, finished in two thousand thirteen. So, so we're closing in on the ten year, a ten year wear pattern on that, and we're doing pretty good on that road. But what if we start going backwards to seven years where we have to BOMAG and start all over? You're gonna be putting a huge amount of expense in there, take the Alderbrook, you're looking at thirty-two thousand a year, basically. If you get ten years out of it, when you start cutting those figures down to seven because you've hurried your base in cold weather, I don't, I don't like it. I don't, I have no problem with spending the money on paving, I just, I think we're just too late.
Do you think, you think after Septi, you think even the date of September fifteenth is too late?
I do at this point, by the time we bid it out again, what is it, what's today, the twelfth?
Yep.
Before we do it, before we get it, so there's no way. No, there's no way of doing all of that this year. But the top coat, so the top coat is the second half of station, right?
It's from the railroad tracks back to the village.
Is that section right there at the railroad tracks gonna, how do you fix that? Is that the same problem?
I can dig that out.
Okay.
I can dig that out with the excavator and work with whoever gets the quote.
And they'll just.
And I'll be honest, I, I'll be honest and this probably isn't something I should say, but I, I hope Pike Industry gets it. Because I want them to be liable for that base coat moving forward.
Yeah, yeah.
So what do we wanna do?
Well.
Put it out again?
Put it out the bid for the Coventry Station top coat. From the railroad tracks to the.
I, I'd be surprised if we're not gonna do this scope of work if we even get close to sixty-six dollars a ton.
What's that now?
If we're gonna do, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do that much less, there's, there's no way we're gonna get it for sixty-six dollars a ton.
Well, Gray's called, Gray's emailed me today wondering who got it, so maybe they've. It looked like, and I can't remember in their bid, it stated that they might have a hard time finishing all the projects, but they might be able to do that one, so they might be a competitive bidder.
Why don't we resubmit the bid in, in different stages by the date that we want it to be done by? And then in the bids, they can pick and choose, or we can pick and choose which roads that. We wanna have done.
Well, I think that's, I think that's what David's saying is we don't wanna do any, anything big this year, now we're getting too late.
But if you do it as a project and you do it in phases, the first phase is to top, seven months from now, you may go ahead and.
I see what you're saying.
And you do it as one project, but you can let them phase it out and you're gonna get a.
Tell them, tell them they wanna phase it that way.
And you'll be able to fit it in whatever chapter event you wanna fit it in.
Yeah, we got the money to prove this, even if it doesn't get finished this year.
And the good thing is you'll get the twenty twenty-one pricing and it will go up next year to do the second part of that project.
What do you think about?
What do you think, Dad, maybe have it, maybe have what you wanted to have done this year and, and still do the same bid? And then just have the rest of it finished by, say, June thirty-first and maybe get another bid on some more paving next year after town meeting, we approve more funds for more paving.
That is, that is a way to go and a thought process that oil is gonna go up, or we could do a huge amount of paving next year. And drive the price down even further, we're not getting any deals at sixty-six and seventy and seventy-four.
Okay.
I mean, think of, so think about it, so if you took four hundred thousand. And then we added another four and we said, hey, we're gonna do eight hundred thousand dollars worth of paving this, next year, and this is the price we, I think we'd have a little bullying strength there. What do you guys think?
Well, you think, you think, you think even though. I don't think we're gonna get less than sixty-six dollars a ton next year, regardless if we do a million dollars worth of paving or not, so I think we should, we should have them bid it out, but tell them we only wanna do X this year. And then we'll do the rest, they can lock the rest in and have it done by June thirty-first.
Only way I can see that price going down is if oil goes down and I bet you that's not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
No.
But it guarantees some support next year, they can get off, you'll be first in line in their service.
Yeah, I think, I don't think they have, they don't really have the time anyway, I don't think any of them had the time, so.
So you wanna rebid the whole thing and just go with Coventry Station this year?
Yeah, rebid the whole thing with Coventry Station being done by whatever date, then the rest of it spring by.
Well, again, you don't want it too early, but when do you think, when do you think a good start date is, when's ideal time to pave in your mind, July first, June?
Um, June's safe.
Okay, June, so to be completed by.
June first to, um. July first be our ending fiscal, right?
It do, no earlier than June first.
Yeah, June first, okay, we'll put it back out for bid then, June first to June thirty-first.
So David, would that, that give us one, David?
Yeah. Go.
That, that gives us plenty time to throw more money into it, right?
Yep. Well, no.
But that, but the, that overage wouldn't be able to come out, so say we got.
They're not gonna have to pay for it anyways, we're only gonna pay for what they do this year.
Right, but if we're doing the rest of it still in this fiscal year next year, we're not gonna be able to use that money yet to add it anyways. If we say this needs to be done by June thirty-first, unless he's got a different thought.
Because you're gonna have leftover money from fiscal year twenty-one, once we get the audit, most of them will know with that amount of. So.
Kinda tell us now.
Like, I don't have it now.
So, eight hundred thousand, so we're, we're.
But leftover money is.
Can be used.
Use it right away.
Okay.
It's the money.
That's because of how it, yeah.
It typically.
So we'd be okay to fund the shortage of a hundred thousand in this?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right, so that's what we'll do.
Okay, let me just get the, the bid specs right, which look five to the railroad tracks, this is the section of Coventry Station.
Top coat.
Top coat, fast turnaround, Dubai.
September fifteenth.
Let's do, yeah, I guess, I think we'd be all right September fifteenth, I mean, even if it gets cold, the pavement's gonna be warm. I mean, the, the airport road didn't blow up last year, I mean, that's still perfect, but what they did right after the airport road blew up and it's all cracked.
Yeah.
And then the bridge would be due the day of the first meeting, they might be a little shorter than thirty days, but due the first.
We want it for the, for our August.
Yeah, the first meeting in August, whatever date it is, let's call it the seventh or eighth or something like that.
So could we have Ned write up the bid proposal and have us review it real quick and we can send it back out to those three?
Yep. He'll email it and we'll approve it this week to send out, okay?
Okay. And, and the face approach, Coventry Station this year, everything else do during the.
June first to June thirty-first, in the month of June of twenty twenty-two.
Is there a specific time period for bids to be out there?
Yeah, it should be out there thirty days, but twenty-one.
Cause that'd be June thirty, that'd be July thirtieth to make it for August meeting, which is one, two, three and a half, three, three weeks.
Okay.
And June only has thirty days, so the last date for twenty twenty-two would be June thirtieth, not thirty-first.
Right, no, we got that.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess for number nine, we're just gonna cable it, right, number nine, yeah, okay. Okay, you're up, Mr. Barlow, treasurer's report.
Oh, that's right. Well, it's not, it's not worth.
It'd take me about five minutes, probably, so yeah.
Yeah, that's a little bit too much, you guys have it.
I have it.
Any of the audience who want the copy, if I have your email address, I can email you the whole, actually, it went out. So you have that to your reading pleasure? Yes, you see what I see, well, some.
I don't understand what these people.
Including all the bank statements.
You just see numbers.
Yes.
These are good numbers. These are good numbers.
So, I guess a few highlights, it was a normal month in terms of spending from the general fund, nothing out, out of, out of the lack there. Spending from the reserve funds was also fairly normal for this time of year. The, there wasn't spending from the road fund and that was not new spending, it was me reconciling the accounts over the past year to make sure I catch everything. And, and get it into the right bucket and so that the road infrastructure equipment was not new stuff, it was from months past. Everything else was current this month, the reappraisal coming to a close, you see there was some spending there, eighty-four hundred. For the audience's information, we write all the checks as a general fund, so when you're looking at the general fund here on the report, all the checks come from there. The reason, I then moved the money out of the reserve fund into the general fund to reimburse the reserve. And the money originally got in the reserve funds when I moved it from the general fund. But we write checks out of just one account, that's why you see the report set up the way it is. Moving on to the investment section, there's a bit of a change there because we started to reimburse the school for the first time in many years out of the Edmund Douglas Price Fund. They did buy books this year for the library, fifty-four hundred eighty-four dollars and forty-eight cents worth, so I've changed the format a bit to reflect that expense. And I have, we have a sufficient accrued dividends over the years to reimburse right out of the dividends without selling any of the stock, so that's what I did. And we could do that probably for another year, but I, what, what I propose to do is when we meet with our investment advisor next week, is discuss that with him about. How to successfully set this fund up from an accounting standpoint and, and an investment standpoint going forward. Um, we closed the fiscal year, June thirtieth, July first, we're in fiscal year twenty-two, woo-hoo. Yeah.
Have we passed an audit?
Uh, fiscal year twenty audit, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, in a sense of passing, in the sense that he passed the preliminary draft to the town for review. So now it's fiscal year twenty-two and I'm doing fiscal year twenty-one audit immediately, so I spent the day here today, that's why I'm such a rambunctious mood. But it was a good year from an investment standpoint, it wasn't just the town that benefited, of course, it was nationwide, but the town benefited from that greatly. Investment numbers are way up, so with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain.
Yep.
And if you're home reading this in your spare time and you have a question, just send me an email.
Feedback on the twenty twenty draft report, we just send directly to you. If we have any direct questions, go directly to you on the twenty twenty.
On the audit, it depends what it is. Sure, I mean, you can throw it at me.
We appreciate all your work, Dave, you do an excellent job, we're lucky to have you. Okay, warrants. I, I did, yeah. David, you had a chance to go through the warrants?
I haven't. You guys checked them out?
I have, um, I didn't see anything that was out of the ordinary.
Good, Phil.
I'm just giving through the warrant, I didn't look at receipts, so.
Just, let's just, yeah, let's just, yeah, let's just spend five more minutes.
If you guys. I usually go through and make, mark off, make sure everything's there, Deb did her job right.
Thank you.
But I haven't done that for this one. Nah, it's gonna take more than five minutes to do that. What's the work safe traffic, did you get a sign package, David, is that what that work safe traffic control is?
So is there an actual bill on that? Because I've been waiting uh, months, I've been waiting over a month now for my bills, I did get. From my signs.
Yeah.
So I believe that showed, uh, did we get a bill?
Yes, and the pack has left.
Twenty seven hundred and change, it looks, I think.
You got the signs though?
No, I haven't got my uh, speed limit signs, the only signs I basically got is uh, Terrapin Lane. Couple S curve turns, I probably got, well, Deb, I wrote on the invoice the ones I didn't have, right?
Um, I think there was one that you had marked that you're gonna be, was it returning?
I was gonna return the Alda Brook one because that one was wrong.
Yeah, I think that was.
I had two Alda Brook signs I was returning because the wording was wrong. Uh, I didn't get my.
Eighty six.
Number of speed limit signs, thirty five mile an hour speed limit sign, so I thought, sure, I marked everything. It shows everything that was backordered, I think, on that slip, I can't find your uh, thing, I'm sorry.
Cause I think you have check marks next to almost all of them, and one of them, I think you had stated. Returning or something to that effect.
Yeah, but I think if you look on it, it shows backordered, so I don't know why we would pay. Till we get up, it's up to you guys, I, I really don't care, probably better it comes out of this year's uh, budget anyway. This point, right?
I mean, that check can be held until all signs are received in if you would like.
Alright, I, I, I know it's right there, it's, it clearly states on the invoice that it was backordered. Uh, I, I'm, for some reason, I'm not finding your uh, I know you, I had it this morning, your email.
Work safe.
Alright.
Yeah, that'll be in batch two.
Which PDF?
It's gonna be the one with stage day.
G twenty two oh one batch two, bottom.
Yep.
Shift one of the left turn, one of the yield, backorder is speed limit. Everything, it only says backorder, it was on the speed. Of course, if we were turning upside, that's gonna change anyway, great.
Yeah.
So why don't we hold that one?
Yeah, I don't know if it's uh. I guess I, I'm gonna hold judgment, I've uh, dealt with this company for years and um. May not dealt with retired, but I am not gonna pass judgment quite yet because of the difficulty people have in getting product. I know he said, I know on the speed limit signs, he said it was just about impossible to get his aluminum.
I mean, we can void that check if you think there's a possibility of that invoice amount is going to change. We can just void that one check, wait for the new invoice and then pay it off from the new invoice. Seeing how we don't do a lot of spending with them on a monthly basis, we don't really wanna carry a credit if we do happen to.
I know I, I've ordered uh, since then, I've ordered a couple new signs for the uh, part that got damaged. By uh, spray paint.
Did you order that Hillcrest Drive?
That what?
Hillcrest Drive.
I just, I repaired it and just put uh, I had some tape around this brick drive.
Okay.
You're saying it's, on what page is this PDF?
You're on.
It's way near the bottom.
Yeah, it's all the way down.
My apologies for my computer skills.
Now you're in the batch two one, right, Dave?
I'm in the right batch, I believe, what, what number was it?
G twenty two dash oh one, batch.
No, 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 on, on the right, I'm at thirty three of eighty eight.
I think it's page three of eighty one.
No, 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 eighty seven of eighty eight, you wanna be at eighty seven of eighty eight.
I was gonna jump in.
We got them all right, yeah, right?
Eighty one is that?
Eighty seven.
Eighty seven.
Yeah. And then eighty eight is your pack and slip.
I've got, I got the yield. And the speed limits, you got fifteen backordered. I'm waiting on those and I'm returning the Alda Brook. And I also placed an order just last week on the uh. Sign for the par, however you wanna do it. Basically out of that, basically out of that number, you get the fifteen speed limit signs and the two Alda Brook signs if you don't wanna pay right now.
So, okay, we probably oughta hold it if we're not gonna pay it because then it'll just get redone, that way we don't have a credit like Deb was saying.
So we're voiding that check.
Well, you, I would suggest waiting, yes.
These are all the signed warrants from the last meeting. Oh, they're just being filed.
Yeah. And there is one warrant in there that was not signed at the last meeting in reference to the check that. Uh, Mr. Treasurer discussed for the EDP funds for the school. So I have that warrant included with this week's warrant so that you folks can go ahead and uh, make sure to sign that one.
Yeah, I'm guessing they've been made it into this pile, cause there's no unsigned warrants in here.
These are all signed. Oh, maybe they're hooked to those.
Yeah.
See, I had all the warrants on top of last week's warrants or the last one's warrants for you folks, they should be all put together. That was in that folder I gave to Ned.
No, that's, that's.
Scott, you're at the office?
Yeah.
I'm gonna need, I don't know if this is the right place, but I'm gonna need you to sign that, uh, one of you guys to sign that NICOM. Contract they sent out for four grand for the Alda Brook. You have that, Ned?
Is that for the um?
Crack seal. Crack, uh, crack seal in.
Okay.
I don't, I never got a fine email.
You sent me the email of the sign, actually.
Email of the sign?
No, you sent him, did you get an NICOM contract via email?
Did you just want it?
Did you folks make the notation on the G twenty two dash oh one, the workplace, that that's being voided?
Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Are we good to approve warrant?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the warrants except for the one check to.
Workplace safety.
Workplace safety.
Workplace safety, we're gonna avoid that and wait for a corrected invoice. Have a second?
Second. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Just one in here too.
You should have two payroll warrants, two payroll tax warrants, one for EDP for the school. One general warrant, twenty two oh one, and one reserve warrant are twenty two oh one.
Yep.
We'll put this one from last week on top.
Perfect, actually, all of those go right back to Ned. For him to file.
Oh, so it doesn't matter in what order it is, just put it there.
He can put them in whatever order he wants to.
Want to put these things on top?
All I need is for you folks to approve them so David can slide the checks and I can mail them out.
Hey, last week's this week.
Actually, I just, this one, in this folder, because it's.
Alright, um. Approve the minutes of the June twenty first, twenty twenty meeting. I only just had a seat.
I noticed a few things, I thought an executive, oh, an exec, on number twelve, it said uh, others were invited into this session. I don't remember any others being in executive session.
Number twelve?
Yeah.
Personnel.
There were others invited in session, oh, yeah.
It was just us three.
Yeah, it was.
Also, I noted Melissa was on the list, she wasn't at the meeting, Carleen. Um, Lineher is not a resident. And the other thing, I had one other thing that bothered me was uh, the wording. The wording on Waste USA. News Vermont had failed to log a grievance, uh, I don't believe failure is a word to use with uh, News Vermont.
Should be did not. Actually, do we even need?
Well, I don't even think they need to be up. Well, we didn't.
We didn't do an executive session for that. But we. Right out.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did. Let's see that.
Number eleven totally could be eliminated.
Yeah.
That was removed. And.
David, you keep skipping around, I can't read the whole thing.
What's that?
Keep skipping around, I'm trying to read the whole thing in order.
I know, well, I just, I, I, I just, I did that all out of memory on where I was at, I, I looked at them a week ago.
That's how your brain, your brains get drawn like that, yeah.
It kinda does.
So number ten. I remember from the last meeting, I think I made the motion that I was gonna reach out to Norm to ask him about. If we didn't spend six hundred ninety thousand dollars, which we, we didn't have, if he was gonna um. Honor his bid, which he said he did, but that's a moot point because his bid is expired, so.
Yeah.
And doesn't.
You still have to have it corrected in a minute, could you discuss it? Because once you guys sign that minute, several legal binding minutes in any court of law.
It, 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 it kinda does say that, it says additional research and analysis will be needed prior to the meeting to make a secure decision. And I found all that information out, but now the contract's expired.
That executive session number eleven can come right out, we never did it.
Okay, so, yeah, no.
It was removed after we. And then executive session personnel, there were others invited into the session, there were not.
And then it was just um.
Oh, Mr. Gallup was not in. At the meeting.
Okay.
Carleen is not a resident.
Correct, yeah.
Motion for acceptance, minutes with those changes.
Second. All those in favor?
Alright.
What are you doing?
Except for this one.
Uh, I moved them. Okay.
Do this before we get lost in it.
Yeah.
This, so David, uh, Ned found an NICOM contract that's. Approximately one point nine miles. This hasn't been done, right? We have to sign.
No, it hasn't, that was the second bid I got, the first one was for six grand, I, I just saw when you guys signed that one and move on with that one.
One point nine miles to crack seal, all the work road, twenty twenty one, cleaning and sealing cracks. In venomous asphalt pavement, traffic control is included based on one day to complete four two hundred pounds, forty two hundred dollars. I'll make the motion to have Scott sign on behalf of the board, oh wait, that works. I guess you have the second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So do we wanna do the sand bid in other business too? Or do you wanna do that now?
Well, I think we're trying to move on to another business in the first place.
Well, yeah, this is another business, do you have the sand bid?
Yeah, we had one sand bid from um.
Print that out, we'll get it done.
I've already started hauling.
Hey Martha, you should probably hire NICOM, they could seal the road into traffic control.
At the same time.
At the same time, for the same four grand. The sand?
No, or ADA, I only got the letter.
She just sent it, no, it's in, in the very top of the quote, it's right, it's right there, it's hard to see. It's right there, it's hard to see. Yeah, it's hard to see.
I was looking for a separate page of a quote instead of just one little penny. So I think what we need to do is do this down in the gym, because it's a lot cooler down. There's an air conditioner, but it's too flat when you're trying to have a meeting.
We did it last. Alright, so I signed the Nikon, so I'll put that there. So we have this bid in front of us, David, from, uh. Was it from Goldstone? For the sand bid proposal, um. Just don't see, where is the total on this? Oh, right here. So you're gonna pick it up yourself, uh, twenty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for thirty-five hundred cubic yards of three-eighths sand, um.
So, I. I'm happy with the product and everything, and the bid, the bid's fair, I guess, um. To me, it's another example of, um, using VLCT as our advertisement source, um. It's the only company that, uh, bid on that. Uh, men with grease guns and dump trucks don't read VLCT.
You also have the paper. Really, two weeks in a row, every Wednesday.
Was it? I, I don't buy the paper now, so I don't really know, um, I don't, my apologies, I didn't know it was in there.
Martha confirmed it was in the paper. I don't get the paper either, so.
So I make a motion that we approve, um, the winter sand bid proposal, um, for twenty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars from, is it RG Goldstone Inc.? Yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Yeah, he's supposed to be.
Should I abstain?
Yes. Yeah, we're all set.
You did.
Okay.
Okay, so this is Ned's, uh, attorney.
Did you sign, no, you need to sign.
There's actually no place where I'll sign it. Do you have anything else, David?
Uh, I think I'm good.
Okay, other business. Oh, Deb, go ahead.
Thank you for watching.
Sorry Deb, I don't, I don't watch TV.
This is a request on behalf of our friends in Northeast Kingdom Mental Health Services. Um, of course, pre-COVID, they would bring some of, um, I guess, their, um. People.
A good way to put it, clientele.
Thank you, thank you Martha, clientele, they would bring them here to the gym to use the facility to be able to play basketball or do whatever has a means for them to be able to get out and try to interact and just to enjoy something different. Um, they just stopped by today asking if they could come back and start using the gym. I don't know if this is something you wanna discuss tonight, or just a request if you can place it on next week's agenda for any discussion. As far as when you think the gym would be open back up to something of that means.
So is it open? Can we have that?
There are no restrictions in this state, so it's up to us.
Alright. Did they mention Deb too, what days they were thinking, how often, is it once a week, once a month, twice a week, for two hours?
Pre-COVID, it was twice a week, it was like Wednesday and Fridays they would come in. Um, but to be honest with you, we sometimes have some other individuals, non, uh, Northeast Kingdom who also assist, uh, special needs clientele who would just stop by and be like, hey, can we use your basketball court for an hour, two hours? Um, predominantly, it was just Northeast Kingdom, but you do have some of those other requests as well, but definitely two days a week. Generally, it was like one to three-ish in the afternoon, they would be here to use a facility. And then, of course, it's not this point in time, but Halloween, they do a Halloween party, Christmas time, they do a Christmas party. Different events of that nature as well.
So for liability reasons, do you keep a lock of visitors to the facility, or do you know they should be hurt and then come back later?
We haven't gone through it, no, that was through Deb, that was, that was for the. Yeah, the insurance, that was for some, that's different though.
Yeah, but it's just still an overall blanket thing, right? They would still have it and they would swap the.
Obviously, they have insurance.
Uh, we didn't, if I wanna, if I remember correctly, we didn't need it because they weren't writing it out, they were just coming like to general public. Like, remember when I used to have open rec? So it was basically like a scheduled open rec time where the agency is, you know, that the agency was gonna bring your client in, some of them have sensitivity issues. So you can't have like five clients in there, so, I mean, I don't think insurance that's. No, but the town is still liable for it, so we just wrote down like, I mean, what he used to say, you know, so. And from Northeast Kingdom Services, and that was all it was. So if you have an injury, you come back to the town and say, but I got hurt in the community center in Coventry. And you don't have a record of it, or you have a record of it either way, then that liability just will come back to the town.
So basically, from the town attorney, we recommend that a town require any person, business, or other entity that rents a town facility, but they're not renting it, provide evidence of liability insurance with the town listed as an additional insured. Alright, um, let's see, so VLCT recommends the same and includes this in their sample facility rental contracts. If the Lisi has no liability insurance, the town could very be, very well be subject to claims resulting from Lisi's use. Alright, so if it's not Lisi.
I wouldn't think it'd matter if you're paying for it or not.
We were, it was under the blanket coverage of the town. You could probably find it as an info question to VLCT and Amanda's records of her emails, because we did go over that. We might actually make sure, and that's why we don't charge them, is because we want, they only come in for an hour, sometimes they don't stay longer than that. But the issue, the umbrella policy or liability insurance is having a record of who's here when they're here. So that if they go back and say, well, I slipped and twisted my ankle when I was at.
But they really weren't here, and they were, and they really weren't here.
And they really weren't here, right, and that's why I got hurt, and so that's why the sign in is always, once again, you're kind of the target. Because of the amount of money you have, so if I'm gonna hurt my leg at the Jimmy Quick, I'm gonna come here and hurt my leg, right?
We have, I actually, I'll send a.
We definitely have some insurance, I'm sure, let's, let's find out.
So, there's two parts to this, I think we need to figure out insurance for that type of thing, but we also need to decide on what we're doing with the building and the gym.
I think it should be opened up.
I, there's no restrictions, so I think the same thing.
Dave, what's your thought on opening the building?
Yeah, I'm good with it, I mean, if you get your vaccination.
Question or anything, so it's just a matter of. I'll have, I'll put together a form similar to the rental agreement form that just has like a user.
You're just keeping a log of who's coming in and the public is, right, that's all you need is a visitor log.
David, David and Phil, so while, while we're on this subject, it seems like we want people to use this building. And it seems like this insurance, um, is an issue, and we're a town that does have some funds available. We should reach out to see how the town can just pay for a blanket policy to protect the town from anybody and anything that happens in this building. And not put it on the burden of people who want to come use it. Especially if it's for free, if it's a free use and, you know, like, the meals, she's not making any money on the meals, you know, and those old, older people and I think it's a great. Right, she is charging a fee, but I think the town, I mean, I think the town, this building should be insured for people to come in, like these specialty groups.
You already are insured, you already have that blanket policy, that's what I'm saying, it's definitely there, Amanda made sure that happened. Yeah, you already have the umbrella policy, that's for general liability, a personal liability would be something different, someone comes in here and gets hurt.
Let's find.
I think, yeah, I think we probably do have a blanket liability, there's like the school, I mean, people just show up and play ball down there.
Yep.
I do question like with Deb, when you're, you're getting into food service, uh, she is taking nominal cash fees. I think I wanna, I think I wanna, uh, have a separate policy there.
Yep. So Deb, I think, um, we're all in agreement that we wanna open the building, so Ned's here every day. Why don't we set up a, a schedule of which days and times and run it by Ned and make sure those times are gonna work and let's, let's get it started. Meanwhile, we'll just check out our insurance and we'll just.
Okay, I'll reach back out to them then and try to gather a few more days, times, and I'll send it out to all of you. Now, do you want me to mention too that we are going to be requiring now that there's, have Ned make up this sign-in sheet and have it on a clipboard as you enter the gym and whoever is in charge needs to write down every single person's name who is there at the facility.
Correct.
They add the name and address.
Okay, another business, information from the Borderline Ridge Runners AP Club about rerouting trails due to closure along Vermont Route one oh five near Reed Road.
This is just kind of a formality for the, for us to have a, a signature from the town. Uh, it's a state highway, what we're asking for is one tenth of one mile. Oh, thank God, thank you. One tenth of one mile, we had a trail closure which affects, uh, several businesses.
Are you Kevin?
Yes, I am, yep. And we wanna get this section of road opened, and I've spoken with, uh, Jason from District Nine, and, uh, he's all for it naturally. And, but this is again, just a formality, uh, due to Vasa. Uh, Vasa wants the town signature to say, okay, we're willing to do this for the club. And to have the state assign this section of highway which is in our town. And states. I'm sorry? Oh, okay.
Yeah, he has a fire.
Yeah, we have Hillika's store, we have Wayne's Restaurant, and we have the brewery, and probably some other ones. I think there's one, uh, another general store right here in Coventry.
Boy, you're up here.
Yes, I believe so.
Yep.
Um, that would be affected by having this section of highway open, and, uh.
In a good way.
In a very good way, yes. If you go by any business on a weekend to see the number of, uh, ETVs and UTVs, whether it be Cajuns or anybody in Newport, or they just did this in, what, what town was it? Wheelock. Um, there's a new grinder place down there and they serve excellent food, but again, we spent our money at, at places that really, really help us out, and that's what goes around. So, that's all it is, is just, uh, landowner permission form from. Here is a section, if anybody'd like to see the one tenth of one mile by Reed Road, so we can access Reed Road, which is open to us. And also just a state highway right-of-use application. And that's all we have, as far as this is concerned.
So you know where he's talking about, David, he's, he's talking.
Yeah, I see it.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Yeah, I'm okay with it too. How, um.
Yeah, there's a question also.
Yeah, go ahead Deb.
Uh, just a question, does this include access to Little John's Mini Mark that's on Route one oh five?
No.
No.
No, okay. Is there a possibility that we can get access to his place as well, because he's just down the road?
Only if we can get land permission from, uh, I think it's, uh, Sloan and Key. And then go through their field, it's something that we can work on, but as of this time, we can't.
Okay, 'cause I think that would be another great avenue too, because Vasa already goes down through there and has an access point right to, uh, Little John's, so that would be another benefit for another store that's located within our.
We have well over, what, fifteen hundred members now, that's just in the Borderline Ridge Riders. Um, we have over three hundred miles of trail to take care of, and the businesses just want us, I mean, obviously. And we're trying to do everything we can to get there for them. Um, it, it, it makes a big deal to them, it's actually saving a lot of their businesses.
Is it not a temporary thing? Because the way it's written, it sounds like it's a temporary thing.
It can be until revoked. Um, you can put in a date, but most towns will put in until revoked. Because most towns aren't revoking, I mean, look what happened in Newport, I mean, my God, they just opened all the roads in Newport.
Yeah.
Uh, it's just helping the people like crazy.
Newport's roads aren't all, no, no, most of them are, but let's not.
Most, most are. Yes, yeah.
Hey David. Do you think we really, do you think we need to wait for Phil for this? I don't think.
I'm good with it, you?
Yeah, I make a motion that we improve, approve the landowner permission form presented to us by, uh, Borderline Ridge Runners, do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
You're really helping the businesses, thank you folks, you really are, they're. Yeah, I need, uh, what's that again?
This one?
Uh, right here, I need.
Here?
Landowner.
I'm not the landowner.
Yeah, well, town.
I'm not paying taxes on that.
Are we the last town that you need to get approval to go to the state for that little section?
I'm sorry, what was that again?
I said, are we the only town that you need?
No, we're working with, uh, the, the town of Newport as well, they're about a, a two-tenths or just about a three-tenths of a mile.
But they did already support it too.
Well, we're working with them, yes. And if you could date that please. Right here, into the state, please.
I've talked to them too, it's not a conflict, I said it's definitely not a conflict, this is in. It's mine, thank you.
We opened up the cutting room. Up here.
Okay.
And it is gonna need a culvert down in here sometime, we're running it right now, the culvert's broke. But we can get four wheelers through it. And Dave said that the town would probably drop a culvert off. I'll dig it out and bury it, whatever, and ditch, fix that road up for you guys. If you guys.
Actually, I think, um. I think maybe we might be able to get that underneath our, um. Funding we just had, Ned, under our class four funding. Uh, under our, um. Oh, uh, best management practice there. Nine thousand dollars, we could use that money toward a rental for an excavator and I've got an old pipe. Is it gonna be usable for a month or so?
Oh, yeah. We're using it now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, it's fine, I just wanted to let you know, it will need a culvert down there because that one's all busted up.
Yeah, it was actually brought to my attention this weekend, but I think maybe. We might be able to work some of those funds in with the grant we just got.
Okay.
If, uh, if not, I can go down anyway because we're required to, uh, maintain ditches and, uh, culverts on class four roads.
Alright, thank you very much.
Alright, yeah, we'll fix that up.
Alright, and another thing, I need to know if there's a road thrown up. It's an old county road. It goes across, um, Cobb's, Larry Royer's, Joe Russo's. Lawson's. Uh, Lovejoy's and I think it's Bill Hodgson's. We were told back in twenty fifteen that that wasn't thrown up. And I just wanna, of course, that trail has been shut down because one of the landowners up there said they own it and they stopped us, so. I just need to know if that road has ever been thrown up and given back to the landowners.
I don't think anybody here can be, would be able to speak to it, uh, Rudy, you on here?
Yep.
Did you ever get a chance to talk, talk to Mark?
I've gone over a couple of times, I haven't got hold of him yet.
Yeah. I'll try again, uh, I'm speaking about Mark Mormon.
Yeah.
And, uh, he's, um, he did that, uh, ancient road study for the town at that time, he. You guys are saying you, on one of the deeds, you saw a county road named on it. And he claims, I remember him, I asked him briefly about it and he said he never saw. Anywhere that it was on a ro, on a, uh. AOT roadmap.
It's on, uh, no, probably not on AOT map, it's on the Lovejoy's deed. It shows that part of that road. And on Russo's, and Russo, the way it read is if they did give that back to the landowners. Uh, whoever land it was purchased from. Would get all the road, if not, they split the road half and half. But nobody has got anything from the state saying that road is given up.
Yeah. And I just, you know, I, I, I know I've talked with you about it, Rudy, and I just don't have the time to go into the office and research, I just have to be truthful with you.
Okay, well, when I get a chance, I'll go in, look at Russo's deed and I'll go, I go over again and see, uh. Mark and.
And I'll try to talk to Mark again too.
Yeah. Okay, I appreciate it, good.
And just to put it out there. And just to put it out there, our land records are online. So going back, trying to look up some deeds, you should be able to find them right off from our online, uh, portal for land records.
Oh, that would be nice, thank you very much.
Yeah.
The, the landowners that we have talked to said they have never got anything that was ever given back or signed back over to them. So that's why we want to find out, if it's a county road, I'd like to open it back up. So.
Jump into class four road, you'd like to have it.
Yeah, they called it an old county road.
County road?
Yeah. Mister, I talked to Mister Cobb about it and he said it's class four up about half to three quarters away from, from his place. And then from there on, they called it a county road for some reason, I don't know why, so we'll look into it. But.
So you're saying Jim is claiming that it's class four from, uh, Hermanville through that section right there?
Yes, but I don't need it through there, all I need is from the bridge that we got down behind there, up through the Hancock Hill.
Oh, the only reason I mentioned it is I remember he, uh, we put in a, um, little rest area down there. There was discussion about throwing that road up. It must be we never did.
Well, he said it wasn't, but.
Yeah.
Alright.
I'm having a hard time focusing, the fire trucks are right here, where the hell's the fire?
Yeah, we post to you, Dave, I got the way of life. Um, so we have more of a class four road?
Yes.
Um, we couldn't help out with gravel or anything else? The town couldn't and I, I'm, I'm totally confused here.
We can only help on class four roads with drainage, it's all we can do, drainage, drainage.
Or a culvert if it needs a culvert, if I'm right, I know other towns, it's a culvert and ditches.
I'm appalled, I'm just gonna say that, I'm appalled and I'm not gonna be giving more.
State law.
What's that?
I, I mean, the aesthetics of how this is rolling yet again with this club. We're picking and choosing again.
I can't, I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Martha's, Martha's, um. Martha's upset that there's. No, we're not allowed to improve class four roads.
Well, no, I'm. We asked the, the.
You wanna come up here?
Owners asked for help. And the club is. After much debate, decided to give gravel. The club is asking for a culvert and we're giving them a culvert, but we couldn't give a resident and a business owner trouble.
Because, uh, we're, we're required by law, under Vermont law, Martha. To main culverts and ditches on a class four road. That is the only responsibility. The town, any town has as far as that class four code.
Why is the club standing here asking for a culvert and he's bowing down to the club? That's my point, if we needed a culvert, we didn't need the ATV club to come in here and say we needed that culvert. That's the aesthetic I'm talking about, that's the aesthetics about, I, there is a full-blown conflict of interest and I wanna see in writing from the town.
You're wrong.
You can reside over these and.
You were wrong and you just wanna shout at the moon for no reason. We are required under state law to maintain ditches and culverts. You were hollering for no reason.
Now, you're, you are getting upset for no reason, the culvert needs to be fixed, it's, it's our responsibility, right, it's law?
Maintain drainage on class four roads, it's the only thing we're permitted to do under state law, under class four town.
Why is the road commissioner not doing it until we have an outside entity that's already a heated subject coming in and asking?
I just said we're gonna do it.
No, wait, he didn't, he didn't know, he didn't know it was broken.
No, and actually, the drainage may be functioning correctly through the culvert, people can't drive across a culvert unless.
I'm not upset about the work being done, I'm asking about how.
Martha, please, one person at a time, please, one at a time.
And I do, I am requesting that if you'd like to, I would be glad to put it in our interview, I wanna see our town, they're coming to help me with that. And it's not the fact that the work needs to be done, it's the aesthetics about how we go about doing it, there's proper procedure. And this is why our town is in such disarray, this is why all of the hard things continue.
I don't think any disarray, Martha, I don't really, I think it was brought to our attention that there's a culvert that's found on a class four road, can we fix it? That's all, we have a grant fund that's. Available for this kind of thing and. Oh, what do you wanna say, no, we're not fixing the culvert? Why, why should we, well, that's, then why are you, you're arguing with yourself?
I'm not arguing with myself, what I'm saying is that looks like the, you are bowing down, the selectmen are again bowing down to the club. It could have went about a different way, he could have said that and then even Alan Gallup could have said, hey, you know what, we need that culvert fixed. So instead, it looks like the club, again, putting the club in a precarious situation too. That the club is coming and asking for this and immediately getting. Do you know what it looks like to them residents who couldn't even get gravel? That's, that's what I'm saying, I understand it needs to be fixed.
Right, but we're not allowed to put, we're not. Required by law to put gravel on a class four road. Have we put any gravel on any class four roads?
No.
But it's not law. That's all, we're not trying to do any favors for anybody. Definitely not.
Deb has a question.
Go ahead, Deb.
No, I was just gonna say, I mean, David Gallup did state that, um, he had just, he was just notified this weekend of that culvert. So it very well possibly maybe could be somebody associated with. The ATV club or whatever who made that notation. So I mean, that's just being brought to your folks' attention now that there is an issue that needs to be resolved. Um, and I just think with Dave and mentioned the fact that, you know what, we do have that grant. If we do have some money, that's gonna be available to help to assist with replacing that culvert. Um. I don't know, to me, I think like we're just finding out that this issue existed. We haven't had any other landowner on that stretch come to us stating. That there was an issue with that culvert and that it needed to be fixeded, needed to be fixed and we have denied that claim to fix it. I think it's just coming to light right now, David just learned about it this weekend, they're just bringing it to our attention tonight to the board. And it's just going through the resolution now.
And for dental repeat, a town employee did not bring it to the attention of the town. An outside entity brought it to the selectmen who instantly said yes.
I don't care who brings it.
I, I, I'm aware, I'm aware.
I don't care who brings it to me, bring what, any problems that you have to me, that you wanna bring to me, I'll listen to them. Okay.
Can we move on?
Yes, thank you.
I wanna thank you folks so much, very much.
Have a good night.
Nice to see you, man.
Yeah, nice to see you too, Dave.
Okay, other business, rename church. You wanna go?
This is a suggestion from Dave Farlow. Zipped out, I'm not sure where, but, uh, they just, the church under their trend, their transfer. Of ownership from them to us, one of the conditions was, rename the church to the Elijah Cleveland Meeting House. Um, subtitle, formerly the Coventry Confucational Church. Pretty straightforward, we just need to edit the contracts and websites and things like that, just so it's official. No real motion, just informational at this point.
Okay. I think that's.
Were proven to name, I didn't understand yet, Ned.
It's just informational right now, we're not doing anything.
Yeah, it's just informational, Dave, Dave Farlow asked that we, uh, rename the church. To the Elijah Cleveland Meeting House, which was part of, yeah, requirements of our, the transfer of ownership.
Yeah.
Okay, no, nothing to be done.
Nothing, nothing, no need to be done, it's just, it's just something that people should know about and it's gonna happen.
Okay. Martha, you're up regarding the twenty twenty-one Fall Festival.
I hate to ask, can we take a private break, I need to get her back home, so she needs to go down the list.
Okay, sure. We're gonna take a few minute pause here.
Thank you very much for your.
What's, what's happening?
Hey, Dave, it's just me.
Is she coming, is she coming back?
She's taking her home.
Oh, she's taking her home, okay. Alright, we're back, um. Martha and Sylvester regarding the twenty twenty-one Fall Festival.
Okay, so.
Why don't you come right up here, this is the, this is the hot spot.
Okay, so basically, I'm here tonight to ask. Not really ask what kind of inform, um, the select board that the steering committee for the Fall, uh, Fall Festival. Um, wants to enter into a contract with ADA, I did send you the preliminary, it's four thousand dollars, um, I think it's a phenomenal deal. We've all agreed minus David Gallup. Um, and so. We're just kinda looking for that to be in our meeting minutes and to allow me to sign on behalf of the town into the contract. Answer any questions you may have on that part.
So I don't know, David, if you've got the email, it came later, later today, but basically. The four thousand dollars includes, uh, three certified traffic controlled technicians and includes. Two certified licensed security offers, hundred and fifty to two hundred cones. One complete sign package plus two road closure signs. Um, the transfer, transportation of the material from and site and preparing and mobilization. Um, they're gonna get here an hour and a half early for setup, um. In regards to the beer tent and surrounding areas of the event, our security offers are certified to enforce alcohol and tobacco laws by Vermont Division of Liquor Control. And further hold a valid security license issued by the Vermont Secretary of State Office of Professional Conduct, Conduct. So it looks like these guys are, um, legit and, um.
Yeah, I think Jim's fine, I, I think, uh, Kelly contacted me today, don't we have a meeting this week, Martha?
Yeah, she's working on getting a meeting together. I haven't checked what was.
We could probably go over it with that board. At that time, I have been contacted by AOT, um. They were fine with the whole event, the use of the park. They were not, uh, enthused about a one-lane road, they were talking about. Uh, they wanted, um, maybe a police car and a sign on each end. You know, like a, a festival ahead thing.
So. We'll have signage, we'll have signage on each end and Chris Pravantcha, who, um, actually believes he's gonna be able to keep two lanes open. All combed out, so they're gonna try, one lane would be a last resort. Um. A last resort too, so I didn't go with the one lane, that's not what it's gonna be, it's gonna be combed out with parking. Two lanes down, but it's all combed out and there'll be. A traffic controller right before the school so we can pass from the village to the school and control it that way. And then they'll be controlled right at the end of the park and ride. Um, so we're not, we're not going to a one lane, um, I need to enter into the contract and before they'll do the actual. Plan that we'll submit to the state and they'll also pay for any adjustments that we need to do with the state as well under that four thousand dollars.
I see no problem with it, why don't we, have we run it by the rest of the rec committee?
We already did run it by the rest of the rec committee, well, it's not a rec committee, but the steering committee, we already ran it by them, you're the only one who didn't. And I was hoping you would be at the meeting, but you weren't, you didn't, so.
Yeah, I had my daughter here.
Yeah, I, I, I figured it was family obligation, so you, you were the only one that didn't, um, I didn't get a yes from, so all of the other girls said yes already.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
So that's, so that's what I'm asking for a motion to allow me to enter the, into the four thousand dollar contract with ADA. Um, secondly, um, Phil just handed me the contract for, um, North Star Fireworks. Um, I'd like Phil to be able to sign on behalf of the town for this contract for the seven thousand. Um, and then also, I'm working. With Kathy about working on getting her the proper licenses to be able to, um, sell one day. Um, and so I have to get back with Kathy, but we're looking at from three to nine PM for the alcohol sales. Um, and so that would actually, I spoke with Jen Harlow because she had the completely wrong idea about what was going on with the festival. And I also knew that I would need her approval, you know, kinda nod for the, to the state on the traffic plan. So she, um. Said that she is totally fine with having just two officers patrolling. Um, alongside, which is also in our budget and we talked about making sure that we had enough people and. I, um, I wasn't keen on having one sheriff, I think that leaves the safety of that sheriff if something was to happen, a big liability. So I think two sheriffs entering into a contract for two sheriffs, providing that we get Kathy's liquor license.
Yep.
So that's. Um, the other motion I would like, or however you wanna.
Alright.
So in speaking, so in speaking to Kathy and Billy, that, uh, that. Doesn't seem to be as easy as, um. They had hoped, but they were talking about making them get a catering license and they were wondering if we could just turn it into a BYOB.
Uh, when did you talk to Kathy? Because I talked to Kathy on Friday and I talked to the liquor control this morning.
Okay, I, I saw Bill, I don't know, Friday or this weekend, that's what he was telling me, so I don't know, maybe I'm. Maybe I got old news.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I didn't, I didn't talk to Bill because we can't, um, we can't use Billy's license, we have to go through Kathy. Because she already has the tip certified servers and that's where the licenses do, so we have to piggyback off of that. Otherwise, we're gonna have huge problems getting just a festival license, so I actually talked to Jamie who actually signs. At the liquor control today that actually signs the licenses, I just haven't gone back to, um, reiterate to Kathy what's going on yet.
Okay.
Alright, so I'm gonna make the motion, uh, or, or motion to, uh, let Martha sign the ADA traffic contract, uh, LTD for, uh. Four thousand dollars. four thousand dollars. You have a second?
Why are we doing that? Isn't that just all coming out of the?
Formality. It's a formality to make sure that it's in your meeting minutes, that I'm spending four thousand dollars and that I have the authority to enter into the contract on behalf of the town.
Okay.
Yeah, so I give Martha the authority to, uh, enter into the contract on behalf of the town in the ADA traffic control LTD. Do I have a second?
So.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, you have our authority. And then as far as North Star, um, I make a motion that we allow Phil, Phil to sign the North Star fireworks contract in the sum of, uh, seven thousand dollars. When he gets the chance.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then I guess.
And then the sheriff's contract is, um.
You have, yeah, you're, you're okay to sign this year.
Well, she, again, with the meeting minutes and how we're in that would be an adjustment to a contract already existing. So we wanna enter into a separate contract for just that.
Right, it's gonna just be a separate one day contract.
Correct, for them hours for two officers.
Yep.
And then I can.
And is it like eighty an hour or something?
It's a hundred dollars.
Total?
No, it's a hundred dollars now.
Oh, nice. Oh wow, great.
So.
I think, you drinking beer?
If it's Jesse, maybe we might get lucky. Oh, oh, do you have anything else for me?
No, I think you're doing a great job and, um, yeah, keep us posted. When I leave here, I'll pace that off and then I'll see about some fence.
Oh, Gallup doesn't, doesn't know about the fence.
Oh, so apparently Dave, Ladyburg Park has to be snow fenced in or some type of temporary fence.
Oh, really?
Yeah, for the liquor, for the liquor. If it was BYOB, would it have to be, regardless of?
Regardless, it has to be wherever you have the alcohol served or alcohol at. And I'm, and I'm over cautious about this because at Coventry Day, two years in a row, I had to tell people they couldn't drink at the school. And it was me going over telling residents that were already intoxicated, they had to leave. So I just wanna make sure that nobody else is in that position to alleviate that and having it that way will be okay.
So I'm gonna, when I leave here tonight David, I'll just go pace off the three sides, you know, from the, uh, you know, by the truck garage over to the road and then across the face and then back to the, back to the river and I'll get a rough six hundred, five hundred, four hundred feet, whatever it is, and then I'll, um, instead of.
I'll be fine. I can do that. I think we should just wait. I think right now we should just wait and hear from Kathy, see if she's gonna have to keep it on the, um, diner grounds or if we can go out of there and then we make our decision.
With the catering license, she'll be able to go across the street. She'll be able to go off grounds. So.
So, once we know that, we can do the fencing. It won't take me long at all.
Well, I was thinking, if, do you have a use for the fence after, after the event or is it something, maybe we could just rent it?
Yeah, I was wondering on that. I don't know what I, you know, all I've got is snow fence. It's not.
That's actually what Jim said to use.
Yeah.
He said.
Sure been ugly up the place.
Yeah, oh, I agree, but I don't know any other way to secure and they only want one entrance in and one entrance, you know, they said one entrance in and out. Or if you've got four people that are controlling the alcohol, you can have two entrances in and two entrances out.
Well, the fish concert had plywood eight feet high along the side of the road, so I don't think this fence is really gonna be that ugly.
Well, he's worked hard on that park, so I understand his.
Deb has a question also.
Oh.
Go ahead Deb.
Question from Martha, just to make sure that whatever invoices that you need to check for, I'm assuming the fireworks probably wants to check ASAP to get those reserved, just to make sure to give me the signed contract so we can get those checks issued for you. And once I issue them, whether you want me to give those to you to disperse out or if that's something you just want us mailing directly to them.
I would, you know, the fireworks contract is definitely a write-off, so once Phil signs this contract, they'll give you the actual invoice that's in the contract and that's what you'll have to pay out. Um, they sometimes invoice it, it did run both ways. But, um, yes, I will next month beforehand, before the actual event, so the fir, probably the first week in August or the second. As a first week, I'll present the budget to you and sit down with you about invoice, how I need every check to go to what vendor and everything. And then we'll have it to bring to the board to approve through the warrant, so the day of I. Paying at all the vendors.
Okay, yeah, sounds good. Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thanks for the update. So David, as far as, uh, executive session number fourteen, you wanna wait and do this next meeting when Phil's around?
Sure.
Okay, well, it's gonna table fourteen till next meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
You can stop recording. Thanks everybody for attending.
In time.